Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, December 15th, 2021. Roll call, please.
Garrity.
Here.
Half.
Here.
Norton Top.
Here.
Pay Sac. Bow.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Sula.
Present. Is my microphone working?
Doesn't sound like anyone.
I can hear it. I can hear you tapping on the speaker, out of the speaker.
You can hear me?
I don't seem to be.
It's not real loud, but.
If everyone would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll try to talk louder then. First item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes from the meeting that was held on November 17th. I did notice one small error in point four where we changed the meeting. The very last sentence is backwards. It says that we rescheduled the October meeting to October, the October 12th meeting.
Oh, okay.
So it's backwards.
Okay.
Other than that, does anybody else have any changes?
The only thing I noticed was that the motion was made twice by two different people.
Where's that at?
On page four.
Which one?
Is there two different motions?
Yeah, there's two different motions.
Yeah, there was.
Oh, there was? Oh, they're written out identical, so.
One for the residential and one for the non-residential.
Oh, I missed that. Sorry. Did not see that.
Any other questions, comments, or changes? Move to approve as amended. Motion by Mr. Norton Top. Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bow. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Tonight, we have two informal reviews. As everybody knows, the informal reviews are an opportunity for potential petitioners to present concepts to us. It's pretty much an open discussion. No action's going to be taken this evening, and a good thing about it is we can change our minds later if we want to. So at this, I'll turn the floor over to Clara to introduce the first item.
AR Building Company is seeking feedback on a plan to develop vacant property east of Route 21, north of I-94, and south of Wood Lake Apartments. The plan requires rezoning the subject property from O-1 PUD to R-6 PUD in order to accommodate 153 rental apartment units in three four-story buildings, and that's a density of approximately 13.37 dwelling units per acre. The applicant of the informal review is here to present their request.
Okay, great. Thank you. If you please, it's probably easier to use the portable. Thank you. That one's definitely working.
That one works. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hal Frank. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Melzer, Pertil, and Stell, and my address is 1515 East Woodfield Road in Schaumburg. I'm pleased to be before you this evening to talk about and get your preliminary thoughts on the potential development of a parcel that I have familiarity with and the chairman has familiarity with that goes back almost 40 years. The property is owned by a partnership called the Milwaukee I-94 Property Partnership. They've owned the property, I believe, since the 80s. They've worked with the village on and off on various aspects of the property. In 1988, they granted an easement along the perimeter of the property so that the village could extend sewer and water improvements. In the late 90s, the entire property was vacant, and in the late 1990s, I came before the village boards and commissions and worked with the village, the village staff, and the boards and commissions, and the attorneys, village attorney, to create what became, what has become and been, the Wood Lake Apartments. When that property was rezoned to allow for the multifamily use, and it was rezoned and impressed with a planned unit development, one of the conditions for the approval of the Wood Lake Apartment project was that the south 11 acres of the property be retained for potential office use. At the time, all of the property had been zoned for office. It had been, you know, vacant and with little expression of interest with development for office uses for years and years and years. And so when we came before the village back in the late 1990s, the village was persuaded that it would be beneficial to the village to rezone the property, the north part of the property, to allow for the construction of Wood Lake Apartments, and of course, that's what happened. At the time, as I say, one of the conditions was that the property owner, the partnership I just mentioned, would continue to own and market the property that we're actually talking about this evening for office uses. That was back in 1997, 1998, I think, right, Tracy? I mean, a long time ago. So, and I know you're all familiar with the property. I'm sure you've all driven by, on the tollway, driven by the property and seen the big sign that says, you know, "Property available." It's been on the market and available, literally, and undeveloped for decades. And so I think that the reality that that property is not going to ever be developed with office uses has been recognized not only by the market but also by the village. Recently, the village amended its comprehensive plan to acknowledge the possibility of multifamily use being constructed on this parcel, the 11-acre parcel we're talking about this evening. And obviously, it's a consistent and compatible use to the Wood Lake Apartments. It's completely buffered, you know, on each side by either highway or trees and other natural features. So recently, the would-be petitioner that's before you this evening, AR Building Company, and they're based in Pittsburgh, was introduced to the property and expressed an interest in developing it with additional multifamily uses. So we have submitted to you for this preliminary discussion. We've submitted to you a package, which I know is up on the screen right now. With us this evening, I have two representatives with us. One is from the civil engineering firm, Manhart Consulting, Jared. And what's your last name again? Classic. That's what I thought, but I didn't want to mispronounce it. Jared Classic. And then Emily Mitchell is with AR Building Company. Emily has flown in from Pittsburgh to appear before you, introduce you to her company, and introduce you to the company's plans, and then to get whatever feedback, you know, that we can get from you so that we can take this concept to the next level. Okay? So with that, if there's no other, no questions for me, I'm going to turn the floor over to Emily.
Hi, everyone. Can you guys hear me all right? Well, as Hal said, my name is Emily Mitchell. I'm the Director of Development at AR Building Company. For the record, my address is 310 Seven Fields Boulevard, Seven Fields, PA, 16046. As Hal said, I'll just start with a little background on AR Building Company. So AR Building is a 50-plus-year-old apartment development company. We're based in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. We have a single owner. He has no partners, no investors. We build everything with our own equity. Right now, we have about 9,000 units in 50 communities across 10 states. You can see on that map there where we're located. Over the next couple of years, we're looking to expand into four additional states, one being Illinois. Along with this project, we're also working with the Village of Cary on a 250-unit development on a former school site there. So when I say we hold for a portfolio, that means every time we go into a project, we go in with the intention that we're going to own the property for the long term and maintain that property for the long term. We take that very seriously during the design and building process, using sound design principles, really high-quality building materials, because we know ultimately it's going to be our responsibility to maintain it to our highest standards. We're also a fully integrated company, so we buy, build, and manage all of our projects. We acquire the land and entitle it, which is where we are here today. We build our projects, so we have two construction divisions that act as a general contractor for all of our projects. And then we hire all of our onsite staff for each of our communities. So each of our communities, including this one we're proposing today, has a full-time management office right there on site. So any questions that come up along the way, whether it's now, you know, in the future, once it's under construction, or even once it's up and running, you can always come back to me because we're fully integrated and I can get you answers to those questions. Thanks. So these are just some examples of our recent projects. The two there on the right are located just outside of Pittsburgh. The one on the upper right is in our Bright Oaks community, and then the one on the bottom right there is in, it's called Evergreen Apartments. It's a 92-unit apartment building. It's right off of I-376 in Monroeville, Pennsylvania. And then I particularly wanted to draw your attention to the building there on the left. It's in our Reynolds Farm community in North Kingstown, Rhode Island, but the reason I wanted to show it to you is it's a four-storied elevator building with about 50 units. So that's probably the closest to what we're proposing here tonight. Next slide, please. So these are just some examples of our interiors for you to take a look at. On the lower left there, you can see, that's just a typical living room. We have all vinyl flooring, floor-to-ceiling windows. There's a typical kitchen there in the middle. You can see we have granite countertops, stainless steel appliances. All of our units have washers and dryers inside them. We also have a balcony or a patio for each of our units. We find that our residents really enjoy having that outdoor living space, but also the natural light that it helps bring in. And you can also see from the picture there on the left that the outdoor balconies really help to break up the facades as well. In addition, each of our communities typically has a clubhouse like we'll be proposing here in Gurnee. That clubhouse has that full-time management office along with a fitness room, common room. We find more and more of our tenants are using that common space as they work from home, and a swimming pool as well. Go to the next slide. So this is the site. As Hal said, and I'm sure you're all very familiar with it, it's at the intersection of Milwaukee Boulevard and Wood Lake Boulevard, I'm sorry, Milwaukee Avenue. It's about 11 and a half acres right off the I-94 interchange, just south of the Wood Lake Apartments. You can go to the next slide. So this is just a zoom-in of the site. You can go to the next one. Here's an image of the site constraints that we'll be working within. So there are two 100-foot landscape buffers off of both I-94 and Milwaukee Avenue, so we'll be building outside of those buffers. To the south of the property, there is a stormwater retention pond, which we understand will probably have to expand for our development, but we're just looking into kind of the permitting and engineering logistics of that now. And then in the middle of the site there, you will see there has been a wetland delineated on the site, but our understanding from our wetland report is that it's not high quality and that it's only .08 acres. So we do intend to fill it in so that we have a developable area on our site. Go to the next slide. This just quickly shows the topography of the site. From the northern end of the site to the southern end of the site, there is a 25-foot drop, so we'll just have to be building within that as we move forward. Next slide, please. Thanks. So before we talk more specifically about the zone change, and I know Hal spoke to this history here, just wanted to take out this excerpt from the Gurnee's Comprehensive Plan. Our site is in the Washington and Milwaukee sub-area. It's outlined there in the red right-hand corner that you could see. So in the Comprehensive Plan, it does recommend that the site be used for multifamily apartments, similar to what you'll see in the adjacent sites, but also to add housing diversity to the village. Thank you. So this has some zoning regulation detail, which I'm sure we can pull out and kind of look at further, but as Hal said, another said, it is currently zoned for office with PUD. We are recommending that it be rezoned to R-6 for multifamily. This allows for that multifamily use as called for in the Comprehensive Plan, but it also allows for the density of housing that we think is appropriate right off of those two major transportation corridors, I-94 and Milwaukee Avenue. Next slide, please. So this is just, this is our conceptual plan. We are proposing 153 units in three four-story elevator buildings. We're proposing about a 55-45 mix, one bedroom to two bedrooms, so slightly skewed to one bedrooms. We do have, feature a clubhouse there in the middle so that you can see it, you know, quite easily from anywhere within the site and as you immediately access the site. As you can see here, we are respecting those 100-foot buffers off of I-94 and Milwaukee Avenue and preserving as many trees and open spaces we can in the southern part of the site. We're proposing two access roads right now, entrances and exits to the development, just to help with circulation for residents and emergency services if needed. And then, trying to read this without my glasses, I think, yes, we have 268 parking spots, which does fall within the regulations of the R-6 zoning. We haven't, you know, we haven't really gotten to the engineering stage, and there is quite a bit of grade on site, so we may lose a few parking spots, and that's something we might need to discuss as we get into the site plan, needing a little relief on the parking. But for now, we do think we can fit the 268 units, which gives us about 1.7 parking spaces per unit. Typically, what we find in our other communities throughout the United States, you know, in very similar locations, that 1.5 parking spaces per unit is really more than adequate for our residents and our marketing capabilities. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. And so these are just, this is my last slide here. These are just some conceptual elevations of the buildings we'll be proposing. As I said, they are four-storied elevator buildings. They're about 10 feet floor-to-floor, so at the midpoint of the roof, it's just under 45 feet, which would meet the R-6 multifamily max height requirements. We use a lot of brick, a lot of white siding, ASIC for the trim. We find that these materials together really stand up over time. They look very crisp and have kind of an ease of maintenance, so we can always make sure that our product is looking the best. The brick starts at the first story and then moves up from two to three stories to really help break up the long elevations there. We also use a gable roof to do the same thing and to draw attention to the central entrances at both the front and the rear of the building. I think that is about it. I know I went through a lot of the sides pretty quickly, so happy to go back to any of them to answer any questions. Also, just really happy to hear any feedback that you have for us tonight, and thank you for your time. I really do appreciate it.
I have a question.
Sure.
Getting back to the parking, is it all exterior parking, or is there a garage?
No, it's all exterior parking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think in general, I'm very warm to the whole concept of doing this. I mean, this really ties everything together that's already sort of happening along that corridor. I think in light of what we did with the Comprehensive Plan, I think this makes a lot of sense. So we're adding potentially about 60% more dwelling units to the overall area compared to what's already there. Do you foresee any challenges or issues with egress out of the site overall? I know everybody's able to get access to Wood Lake, but then to get onto Milwaukee Avenue, especially anybody that needs to go south, any preliminary numbers or ideas of what we're dealing with in terms of traffic and what it's going to take to get all these folks that are going to be on this side of Milwaukee Avenue onto Milwaukee Avenue?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great question. At this point, we don't have any preliminary, sorry, preliminary traffic studies. What I can tell you is our experience throughout the country with similar kind of developments, kind of right off of major transportation corridors like this, is that we do find because of how our residents are dispersed, that there's really no impact to the level of service off our access roads. So while we don't have that transportation study now, we certainly will kind of bring that into the study into the future, but I'm not really concerned about the impact there, given our experience with other similar sites.
I have one other question. So I noticed that you've aligned some of your setbacks and everything in line with the ones that are there with the existing PUD. So, but if you're going to straight R-6, what protection mechanism do we have as a village to make sure that they actually? It'd still be a PUD, so, okay. Those will all be built into the PUD. Okay, great. Thank you. Great, thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Okay. Well, I asked a question before, and I'll give you my feedback. I'm in favor of what I've seen so far. Obviously, we saw pictures of a building in Rhode Island and some mock-ups. I think that, as we're informal here, I like what I see. I do think, I was just reading something about, this is kind of timely, just happened to come across an article just talking about the need for additional rental units as homes become more unattainable for certain people, or maybe even with the pandemic and people want to be able to have more flexibility and be able to move and have that sort of shorter-term type of, compared to owning a house for 30 years. I think it looks nice from what I've seen, and, you know, the presentation kind of checked out all the boxes that I've seen so far. So again, this is, you know, an informal review, but so informally, I think you're on the right track.
Thank you.
I like what I see so far. My comment would be, now you referenced that you have other sites that are adjacent to high-volume interstates, is it?
That is true. Actually, the Evergreen Apartment property that I showed you on, I think that second slide there, that's right off of I-376, just outside of Pittsburgh.
Okay. So when the buildings are actually designed and engineered, then you'll take into consideration the extreme amount of noise that will be generated adjacent to it?
Sure, yeah. I mean, we have found at Evergreen Apartments that we have not heard any concerns from our residents. In fact, I have been in the building and I haven't heard anything. Maybe at night it comes across more as a white noise. We find with like kind of our contemporary construction techniques and the fact that we pay very strict attention to our construction techniques, that with the caulking and the airspace and, I'm sorry, I'm not an architect, so I'm messing up the actual technicalities, that the sound is not an issue at all. But also, the brick, along with the balconies, also help to buffer some of that noise.
My comments are pretty similar. I mean, from my view, it fits in nicely with the overall conceptual design of the Comprehensive Plan. The product is such that it's not going to, I don't perceive that it's going to be a big drag on the school system. So I think you're hearing some warm receptivity. So good luck with your continued studies and hope to see you sometime soon.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Okay, next item.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is another informal review. Clara?
Tori OID CPA is seeking feedback on a plan to consolidate 4236 and 4242 Old Grand Avenue. Demolish the existing house and construct a multi-tenant office building. The plan also involves rezoning 4242 Old Grand Avenue from C-2 to C-4, and just as a note, 4236 Old Grand is already zoned C-4. This is consistent with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan as it reflects Village Center for both of these properties. The applicant of the informal review is here to present their request.
If you could use the portable microphone, please.
Hi there. Thank you. Appreciate everybody's time here this evening. This is my first go-around at any of this, so I'm relying heavily on our architect, Adam Lyons, and our builder, John Rickert. If you saw my toolbox at home, it's a Menards bag with a hammer and a, at any rate. My name's Tori OID. I'm a CPA, and I was born, raised, and have lived in Warren Township my entire life. My father started the CPA practice we currently have in Gurnee in 1985. I remember that because it was the last year it was worth watching the Bears, so, Go Bears. So I grew up, was raised in the family business. Not too many children want to be a CPA when they grow up, so my path was kind of chosen for me at a young age. So our first commercial office was in Viking Square, 4343 Old Grand Avenue, a year right before the great, one of the first great floods of our modern time. And from there, we relocated to Greenleaf in Washington on the southeast corner there, and that's where we've been for the last 30 years. As time has permitted, my father has looked to retire, and we've successfully completed the purchase of the business, my wife and I, and I'm also here joined by my sister who works at the office. Her name is Ryan, and we've got a small family office, and we're looking to just build and improve an Old Grand Avenue with a couple of lots that my parents currently own and are looking to contribute to our family to help us build an office building that is complementary to Old Grand Avenue and also allowing, there is a residential property just east of us to enjoy their property as a home, too. So, thank you again, and I'll hand it off here to our architect.
Good evening. My name is Adam Lyons, architect. Well, Tori did a good job of explaining things to you, and I hope you're up to speed with things. Again, the reason we're here this evening primarily is as a result of the split zoning that the two properties have. The building to the west, or the lot to the west, which is addressed 4242, is zoned C-2. The one to the east is C-4. It's all commercial. There are several properties to the west that are extended-use C-2, several properties to the east that are C-4. Under the C-2 zoning district, an office building, as we're proposing, is permitted, and we feel that that's probably the path of least resistance to join the lot to the east, the current C-4, with the C-2 that exists to the west side. The other possibility could be a special use permit. However, that has some features that we're not so inclined to proceed with that seems to potentially pose some issues in the future. In any event, as far as the architecture and the site development, following both the C-2 and the C-4 zoning code, we're addressing parking, parking requirements. The lot is sloped approximately three to four feet from north to south. We're addressing that very well with the site grading and topography. The parking lot slopes towards Grand Avenue. The building itself, we're designing in somewhat of a residential flavor, a residential feel. We've worked with Dave Ziegler from pretty much the inception of the project, and he's endorsed the general character and appeal of the structure, as it has a little bit more of a residential feel to it. Site utility-wise, we've also coordinated with Dave to extend water service to the property in the water development program that's occurring along Old Grand Avenue at the moment. We'll also try to make use of the existing sanitary line that runs to the existing house. So in terms of the property accommodating the new building, we think it's going to work very well. Again, in conformance with the landscape requirements, the landscape ordinance, we'll be in conformance with the site lighting ordinance, and all other things aside, provided we can find a means to join these two lots and make this building conform with, in a path of least resistance, we think that'll be a nice asset to the community and really benefit. and really benefit the Village of Gurnee as a whole. Thank you very much. We'd like to entertain any questions you might have at this time.
I'll start. To me, it seems like a good, solid proposal in terms of the concept. Since your intent is to legally combine the two lots and it would be one lot, I'd work with staff to figure out which of the two zoning districts makes the most sense and just pick one. I totally agree, special use permit is probably something we should avoid if we all can. I like the, from the rough drawings, I like the look and feel of the image that you're trying to portray.
Thank you. I know there was mention about multi-use. I, it was kind of a dream. You'll see on the left side of that picture there, we're not married to the idea. I mean, we could use the space ourselves, but we also thought if there was the opportunity to have somebody complimentary, a mortgage lender or a lawyer or something like that, that could help share the space and complement the business as a whole. But that's not Plan A. You know, Plan A is for it just to be single occupancy for the entire structure. So I know that was noted on there. Just want to make that clear.
But you want the flexibility to rent part of it out if you? Yes, go ahead, Dave. When I was reading through the staff notes, there was some indications of, the staff at least pointed out some of the differences that we would be exposed to, C2 versus C4. And, you know, I wanted to ask staff to maybe elaborate on that a little bit because if I tried to interpret what's in the notes, it would suggest the possibility that maybe we're a little more exposed in having C2 zoning versus C4, given some of the other uses that would be allowed technically in a C2. Just to say, for instance, somewhere down the road, you guys say, okay, well, something happened, we need to leave this site, we're going to sell it, whatever, and whatever coming after it, if it's on C2, the use can change. And if it's C2, then we live with whatever is allowed in C2. We don't have the ability to do anything about that. So can staff elaborate on that? Am I on a track with this or am I somewhere else?
Sure. Well, one of the first things that we pointed out is the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. It does not reflect commercial for that property. It reflects the Village Center, the C4 district. So that's the first thing, is the commercial is really not consistent with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The second thing is that commercial that's over there to the west of this site is really kind of a throwback from buildings that have been there since the '40s and it was really to accommodate a lot of those uses. So to try to further the encroachment of that commercial further east into like the residential area is, again, especially with what the Comprehensive Land Use Plan reflects, might not be appropriate. The other things that we pointed out is, as you said, the C2 district. Once you zone it to C2, any use can walk into that property and occupy it. And again, you do have residential directly across the street. You have single-family residential directly to the east. And I think those are most of our concerns. So you were correct with that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so, you know, given that, I would tend to try to maybe ask you to examine the C4 side of it a little more closely just so that those things sort of align with the other things that we've got already sort of working in the area. I will say, though, I am appreciative of the architecture of the building. I think it's very well done. I think it lends itself more to the residential feel of so much that's around that area. And I do appreciate the touches to that because I know extra architectural detail like that, you know, comes at a cost and so forth. So I am appreciative of your efforts to try and integrate into the neighborhood like that. So, thank you.
Yeah, and just to also try to get on the same page. You don't know me, but like I said, I've grown up, been in Warren Township, and we've been on the same location for 30 years. And accountants aren't known for change quickly. So this is something for the long-term, even to the next generation and beyond. Just to let you know, this is not a turn-and-burn operation or a flip and move on. You know, we respect Gurnee. It's been very good to our family. It's very central. We've honestly looked at other cities as we look to get out of our current lease. And it always just came back here to Gurnee from the mailman, to the post office, to the village. It's critically central to our operations from our clients as Kenosha to Lake Forest, Waukegan, and out west. And it's, it was just a no-brainer in that sense. So we're not looking to, we want to add value. We want to get back and turn what has got to be an eyesore every time Gurnee Days is going on down there and is something that could be actually something kids want to walk by instead of, hey, guys, go across the street, let's go this way. So.
A question. You just mentioned lease. Do you own the properties or?
My parents do.
Your parents, okay.
They bought 4242. There was a house on it years ago in the '90s. It didn't work out. They bought the 4236 a few years later.
So my feedback would be similar to Commissioner Nordentoff is, understanding where you're coming from. Last thing is medium, long-term. Something were to, you know, something were to happen and some other sort of business comes in there, I don't know. There's several different examples in the staff notes, but tattoo shop or convenience store, want to avoid that just as a precaution. So it seemed to me that that C4 was, to me, more appropriate. And I do like the plan. Everything looks good. It looks like an upgrade. So informally, without having everything in front of me, I generally am in favor.
Thank you.
I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement with the other board members. I think the architecture fits well there. It's definitely an improvement to what's on the property now.
And some of you might wonder why we haven't done anything sooner. And my sister can testify to this. My father is cheap. And I knew if we built it sooner, it would be papier-mache and an outhouse out there with a plastic. So I have done everything to discourage my father until I bought the business to do it the way I want to do it, so.
Okay. With that issue, did you hear anything, Brian?
Yeah, I'm just going to echo what I've heard from everybody else. I mean, I could be, I like what I see. I could be supportive of C4 with a special use. Just from, I guess, just question as to the second floor. I mean, it appears to be a one-floor building, yet you've got, you know, a large area that appears to be, is that going to be utilized for anything? Is it just?
No, we don't plan on it. It's going to be, as I understood it, Adam, it's attic space? Yeah, attic space. It's not going to be, perhaps for utility units? Did we talk about that? Yeah, utility units, et cetera. One story.
Okay, great. Well, I think you're feeling a lot of good vibes here, so I would continue, I would urge you to continue to work with staff, finalize your plans and get before us formally.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, what's on your agenda? Next meeting on the calendar is scheduled for the 5th of January. Are we going to have one?
I don't believe we'll have a public hearing, but we will likely have a meeting.
Happy New Year!
But we'll let you know if for some reason.
At this time, I'll open the floor to the public. Does anybody from the public care to make a comment or ask a question?
You step up to the microphone.
Is there something that you'd like to say? Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for attending. Okay, here, you're going to have to use the microphone.
Oh, we record our meetings.
Sometimes the video equipment can't pick up the noise from the chamber.
My name is Otto Winffen. I'm in the Hickory Haven subdivision. And I had one question about this project. There's a parking lot directly to the west of these two lots, I believe. Are they planning to use that parking facility in conjunction with this development?
I couldn't answer that question for you, but.
They actually have a fence proposed between the two developments, so they don't have a plan to utilize that parking. It'll be split off with a fence.
So it would be street parking?
No, they have their own parking.
They have, yeah, they have their own parking.
I understand. And the other question I had, if I may, pertaining to the previous development, there's a retention pond there, if I believe. Are they planning to drain that or?
Well, it sounded like they were planning to improve upon it, but the key thing with both of the discussions that we had this evening, they were both informal conceptual reviews. So, I mean, we don't have, we don't have the fine level of detail available yet to address those sort of questions. But as the projects progress or don't progress, they'll certainly be required to abide by all rules and regulations.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'll close before the public. Hope everybody has a great holiday season. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
We have everybody in motion, so.
Second. Motion, unanimous second.
All right, thanks, everyone.